Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3(c). Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the city shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3(c). A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; a breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting; disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council; and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, July 15, 2025. City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/cityoftaf. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following methods: Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to thecityclerk@cityclerk@cityoftaf.org, and they may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at (661) 763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, and all comments received shall be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, led by myself because I'm wearing this shirt, followed by an invocation from Pastor Lloyd Francis. So if you would all please join us. Hand over your heart, salute, and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we truly are first want to give you glory and all honor, but I'm going to ask you, Father, that there's some people possibly in our community that have heat, air conditioning issues. Father, I pray you make sure our community is safe, the elderly and the vulnerable, that those who could have heat stroke and so forth. Lord, I just ask you to give them relief and find help, oh God. I thank you for the council. I thank you, Father, that you would give them wisdom and guidance, and I know that you will guide our community. And I know, Lord, you will protect our officers, the police, the sheriffs, the city, state officers, Father, every county worker, excuse me, every city worker that has to work. I pray, God, you would keep them also safe as this heat can be high and heavy on them. Thank you, God, for the office administration and all those who do all the work around this business of city council and city business. I pray, Lord, your blessing upon the city and all those who inhabit it, oh God, that every church in this community would be filled to capacity with those seeking truth. I give all this to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Proton Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Crier.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Chavez is absent with notice.
All right. First item on this evening's agenda, item number one, is a public hearing adopt resolutions authorizing Kern County Tax Collector to collect refuse and street sweeping charges and standby charges for vacant commercial buildings. Seeing Manager Jones is out, so Mont Boyer is taking his place.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Section 5473 et cetera of the Health and Safety Code authorizes collection sewer fees by the county tax collector upon adoption of an appropriate resolution by the city council. Prior to considering such a resolution, it is appropriate for the council to conduct a public hearing and to receive evidence and testimony for and against the proposed action from members of the public. Following the completion of the hearing, council will then consider an adoption of the proposed resolution.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, at this time, I'm going to open said public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in support of or opposition to this issue, please step forward. Seeing no one, I'm going to close this public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of TAF Providing for Collection of Refuse and Street Sweeping Charges by the County Tax Collector Pursuant to Section 5473 et cetera of the Health and Safety Code," and "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of TAF Providing for Collection of Standby Refuse and Street Sweeping Charges by the County Tax Collector Pursuant to Section 5473 et cetera of the Health and Safety Code," and find that this activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
None here, sir. Thank you.
No. Counselman?
I have a small one. I think this is going to be an excellent code that we're passing, and hopefully that the F and T owners and staff will take notice of it, and either hopefully they'll go ahead and fix it up and rent it out so we can get some new blood in our downtown area and other areas of our city. So this is a start, is all I have to say.
All right. Thank you very much. Any additional conversation, gentlemen?
None.
None. At this time, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crier.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes. Now pass on a four-o vote. Thank you very much. Next up, item number two, public hearing adopt resolutions authorizing Kern County Tax Collector to collect sewer charges and standby sewer charges for vacant commercial buildings. Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Section 5473 et cetera of the Health and Safety Code authorizes the collection of refuse fees by the county tax collector upon adoption of an appropriate resolution by the city council. Prior to considering such a resolution, it is appropriate for the council to conduct a public hearing and to receive evidence and testimony for and against the proposed action from members of the public. Following completion of the hearing, the council will then consider the adoption of the proposed resolutions.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, I'm going to open said public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this issue, please step forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt resolutions entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of TAF Providing for Collection of Refuse and Street Sweeping Charges by the County Tax Collector Pursuant to Section 5473 et cetera of the Health and Safety Code," and "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of TAF Providing for Collection of Standby Refuse and Street Sweeping Charges by the County Tax Collector Pursuant to Section 5473 et cetera of the Health and Safety Code," and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mayor Proton, you had the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the comment.
Counselman?
I have a small one, too. Like, I did my last comment on the other one, but, you know, the owners of these buildings had an opportunity to be here and say what, you know, to say anything pro or against it if they wanted to, but they chose not to. They all got served, they authored papers, but they're not here. So I say yes on this.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Counselman Waldrop, any discussion, sir?
I'll tell us ahead.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crier.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes. Now passes on a four-o vote. Thank you very much. Item number three, public hearing Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number One. Mr. Boyer.
Thank you, Mayor. The public hearing was set to allow for public comment concerning landscape and lighting maintenance district number one. The engineers' report for the landscape and lighting maintenance district number one was received at the city council meeting on June 18, 2024. Landscape and lighting maintenance district number one consists of tracks 5574, Phase 1, track 5956, Phases 1 through 3, track 6114, track 6501, and track 7227, Phase 1 and 2. The partial assessment will remain at the same level as last year, $86. The funds from the district will be collected by the Kern County Assessors Office and dispersed to the county as a special assessment. These assessments, when collected, will go to their respective funds to pay for the maintenance and operation of landscaping and lighting of the district. It is recommended the city council adopt the resolution setting the assessments for the landscape and lighting maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2025, 2026, as presented in the engineers' report. If the attached resolution is adopted by the city council, the city clerk will deliver a certified copy of the adopted resolution and a copy of the fully executed engineers' report to the Kern County Auditor Controller Office of Special Assessments to complete the process.
Thank you very much, sir. At this time, I will conduct such public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak in support of or opposition to this matter, please step forward. Seeing none, I'm going to close that hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of TAF Setting the Assessment for Landscape and Lighting Maintenance District Number One," and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines. So moved.
Second.
Mayor Proton, you had the motion on that. Any additional discussion, sir?
I've said it ad nauseam, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, and I think I'll leave it at that.
All right. Counselman?
Yeah, like I say, this has been well-publicized, you know, through the newspapers and through other means. You'd think there'd be some people here from those assessment areas here to talk about it, pro and con, what can we do to, you have any issues, what can we do to solve it, but there's nobody here to comment or address the council. So it's their city and their assessment, so that's all I have to say.
All right. Counselman Waldrop?
Nothing else. It's said.
All right. This matter has come before the voters several times because the fact of the matter is, if one thinks that costs to perform these functions have not gone up, and those costs are borne by everybody, then that's just pure foolishness. All costs have gone up. It is a little disappointing the way that really so much the participation in the vote has gone and not just the results of the vote. So I believe you're right in that. This is your government, people. Get involved and voice your opinion, whether you're in support of it or opposition to it. It is still your city. It is your government. Please be a part of it. That's all I have to say. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crier.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bryant.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Yes.
Mayor Nor.
Yes. Pass on a four-o vote. Thank you. Item number four, citizens' request public comments. Thank you very much. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. We have one esteemed guest wishing to address the council this evening, Dr. Kathy Orne from the chamber.
Thank you. I actually have two things I'd like to discuss with you. The first is, I can't help but notice item 13, funding to the TAF Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of January of '25 to March of '25. I can't tell you how much we appreciate at the chamber having that kind of support from our city, and you make it possible. I would encourage you to continue doing that as we get to this portion of the agenda, and I want to thank you for feeling that responsibility to us. It makes a difference knowing that we're supported by our city council, so thank you very much. Now, on a different note, I want to tell you that although the fireworks for 2025 are in the rearview mirror, this will never be forgotten as a fireworks happening in our town, because if it could go wrong, it did go wrong. And it is amazing to me, of course, the fires to the north of us made it impossible to see the hills that are to the, the fires to the north of us, I guess, to the south of us. Anyway, the fires. I have no sense of direction. Anyway, 25 Hill, we couldn't see. And then we had a fire marshal who was wonderful, and she kept saying, well, there's an air quality thing that we have to keep in mind also, which I'd never been aware of for fireworks. I presume it's always been a thing, but never had to worry about it. And now, so we're talking about wind, which was ridiculous, and air quality. And then somebody came up and suggested that perhaps the, the people that were selling food would like to start selling food, but they couldn't sell food until the porta-potties arrived. So we ran around and decided, how are we going to talk to the guy that's bringing the porta-potties? He did eventually get there, but that meant our folks that were filling, were fixing dinner for everybody had to wait till they were set and operable. Never had that problem before. And then somebody noticed that we didn't have a water truck. Now, I am not casting aspersions on anyone. Please be clear, but there was a guffule somewhere, and a water truck was not imminent. We did get a fire truck, which came and sat and was going to do the work of a water truck, but was called away because of fire. So this was all being observed by the people that were in charge of all of the activities from the vantage point of the preferred seating. The preferred seating people could see the running around at the, the point of entry of all the, the things that were going on. So what happened was, we had a very noble young man step forward, and I'm going to immortalize him with a few words here. I've never done a proclamation. I've seen proclamations, most of them in this room, but I felt moved to do a proclamation. So, and many of the people on the board of the chamber did, too. So I don't know how authentic this is, but I just know it needed to be done. So if you would listen, please, as we, as I give you the proclamation honoring Rex Cooper for heroic efforts in saving the Independence Day fireworks show. Whereas on the Fourth of July is a cherished national holiday celebrating the birth of American independence with community gatherings, patriotic displays, and spectacular fireworks. And whereas the annual fireworks show stands as a centerpiece of celebration, bringing joy and unity to our community. And whereas this year's show faced an unforeseen and critical obstacle that threatened its cancellation due to the absence of a necessary water truck required for safety compliance. And whereas, in a moment of urgency and dedication to his community, Rex Cooper stepped up and secured a water truck at the last minute from the West Kern Water District, ensuring the continuation of our beloved tradition. Whereas Rex Cooper's quick thinking, resourcefulness, and unwavering commitment exemplify the very spirit of community service and patriotism that we celebrate on Independence Day. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Rex Cooper is hereby recognized and honored for this outstanding contribution to the success of the Fourth of July festivities on the Third of July. His efforts not only saved the fireworks show, but also preserved a meaningful and joyful experience for families, friends, and neighbors throughout the area. In witness thereof, we do hereby set our hand and seal this day, July 15, 2025, with deep gratitude and sincere appreciation for Rex Cooper's exemplary service. This will be hanging in the chamber. Let me just give you an idea. Rex, every year, comes home from school, or now he's got a job, and is all over the place helping us with the Fourth of July. And this year, he was alerted to the fact that this might not happen, and he went up the list of people of the West Kern Water District until he got to Greg Hammett, who is, of course, in charge of the West Kern Water District. Greg had no idea that this was happening, that this had, problem existed. One of our former employees here at the city, Bobby Withy, was, is a long friend of Rex. So Bobby said, you let me, I'll get a water truck out of where they're parked, we'll fill it up, and we'll take it over, and everything will be fine. And Greg Hammett said, you got it. So Bobby Withy and Rex Cooper saved the day. So I just wanted to let you know, thank you to the city, because your folks, of course, did everything, making sure barricades were up, making sure people were doing what they were supposed to do, especially Steve Schultz. I want to say a special thank you to him, and of course Greg Hammett and Kevin, who is the man who was in charge of the fireworks this year, came up to me because he knew it was time for a check. And he said, I said, I really appreciate this, because the fireworks were 30 minutes late in occurring. I said to him, I'm very sorry. I don't know what happened. He said, everything happened. It was one of those times. And I said, well, Kevin, you guys pulled it out. This, this was wonderful. And he said, I told my guys, I love this town. These are the nicest people we ever work with, and we have to make this special for them. What a compliment. So a special thank you to Kevin from Zambelli. So I just wanted you to know, we're very proud, proud that we did, in fact, have a fireworks show, and hope that never happens ever again in our long, long lives. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Rex, and everybody involved in that, or Debbie, Kathy. I'm sorry I was on the phone with somebody else. Anyway, Kathy, you did a stellar job on that proclamation. For some of yous read a great many of them and heard a great many of them, I thought it was a heck of an effort, so, well done. Okay. Next up, council statements, non-action. Counselman Crier, begin with you this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. We again lost another pillar of the community, Floyd Adams. He was a member of the Lions Club for 40-plus years. He was to Santa Claus for most of the history of TAF prior to his retirement. Year after year, he was there, and he was in charge of the dunk house that was brought in, and he made sure that thing was getting rented and delivered and set up and picked up and all other good things. And he was an all-around good guy. You know, he was a fixture at the petroleum club. He had his own table, his own chair, and I think they're going to immortalize that chair. That's going to be a one seat that's going to, nobody can sit in, but they'll have a plate there, whatever, right there on that seat in honor of Floyd Adams, which is a great honor. And he will surely be missed. I'm sure he's in heaven, giving hell to all the women up there, but I wish him all the luck, you know. He always, he's the sexiest guy in TAF, and we'll, he'll, he'll work that out. But he will be missed. And on another note, I just want to say that, you know, you watch the news and stuff, and you hear a lot of negative crap, excuse me, a lot of negative things on the TV and stuff, especially with ICE. People attacking ICE in the Border Patrol and during their job, but they only show you a small snippet, the one side only. It's this one-sided deal, but they don't tell you about the other side, what truly happened, why they're there. They didn't originally go out there to catch everybody. There's no way in heck they can. And just, for instance, I'll give one example, probably the one that's given a lot of news is the one that they arrested over 300 illegal aliens at a marijuana grow with a facility that processes it and everything. They had a warrant to go in that facility because they broke a lot of federal laws. Wasn't because they, they weren't after the illegals and stuff, but they just happened to be there and, and run away, and lo and behold, they got caught. And one guy was climbing on a building to escape, and he fell down, and it wasn't Border Patrol ICE, that's his choice that he made to climb up the building. But they wouldn't got a helicopter, picked him up to go to the hospital, but he didn't quite make it in time. But, you know, that is one story. They were over there because that facility had a history of breaking federal law. One thing is, you can't have child labor. One, you can't have anybody under 21, and they have to be a citizen to work in a marijuana facility. That's all part of the deal. But they broke so many laws there, and so they got the criminals. They didn't go after the workers, even though there were workers there, but they were working in a facility that was, had to go by federal and state laws, which was broken. So I just want to bring, that's just one example that I just want to bring up. So when you listen to the news report, there's always the other side of the story. And like, I always try and say, there's over 30-plus million illegals in the United States. There's no way in heck they're going to catch them all, it's impossible. Most they can get, in Trump's term, at the most is 3 million, at the very most, if they tried really hard, is all they get. All he's trying to get, the worst of the worst, put them in prison and stuff. But if you happen to be in the wrong area, you'd be, yes, you'll be collateral damage. They'll pick you up, too, if you're associated with criminals or a facility that's doing something wrong, breaking the law, and you happen to be there, yes, you'll be caught up. But as far as going out there and hunting individual homes, going there because they're, it's impossible. They can't, they don't waste their time on that. Only they get into ones that they know that, they have a court hearing, they didn't show up, they'll, they'll find you. So if you're harboring any illegals, and if you're illegal yourself, don't let them in your homes or move to another location. Don't be associated, and you'll be fine, because they're going to get you. That's, that's my perspective on there. And this, just be safe. Anyway, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right. Thanks, sir. Counselman Waldrop?
I went to pass Council Chairman Jerry Gibby's celebration of life, and it was very well-attended, and I'm proud everybody who showed up. I got in hold of the daughter prior to that and offered to buy all of the yearbooks she had. I've been trying to get them from Jerry for her, but he wouldn't let go. Anyway, she made me an offer, and I took it, and I got from 1930 to 2014, and I'm missing a couple, high school, and I got a bunch from Maricopa and a couple from Kwama. But I also got one book in there that I thought, I didn't know why I got it, but she gave me every book she could find. Well, it happened to be for the fire department up to, I think it was 34 or 37, or 74. I got it in here. I was bringing it to give it to the police department when they come in, but they didn't make it, so I'll, yeah, I'll leave it here and have it another time to do it, but anybody want to check out their yearbook, come by, I got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be remiss if I didn't also echo Counselman Crier's sentiment toward the Adams family. Floyd, for the last 13, 14 years, has lived about a block south of me, and, you know, I've got to know him pretty well the last 14 or 15 years, and there wasn't a person who could be as honorary as he was and put a smile on your face at the same time as a guy like Floyd Adams. I'm also going to miss driving by his house and seeing him out there almost every day in his coveralls, working in his lawn. in his coveralls, working in his lawn, whether he's blowing leaves or raking leaves. And for the longest time, I thought we had dedicated this place on the southwest side of the Terrace Drive area as Adams Park, I thought that was an official city park. And until I got to know Floyd, he just put the sign up there himself, and we ran with it.
He kept taking care of it.
And he did a damn good job.
Yeah, he started it.
Yeah, I love the guy, his family are great people, and he definitely will be missed, as will Mr. Gibby. If I remember, Jerry lived in South Taft, off of Asher Way, or I think it's Asher Street, I don't remember which one it was.
Yeah, Asher Way, 199.
As a kid, growing up in that area, I always thought, he's got all that junk in the backyard, and now I look at it, and I'm like, "That's not junk, those are treasures." And so definitely, folks will be missed, and pillars of the community in one way or another, and we're looking forward to maybe seeing those guys on the other side of the rainbow. But God bless them and their family as they go through these tough times.
Amen.
To Kathy's point earlier, she talked about the Independence Day celebration. I wanted to say on behalf of myself, and I believe everyone that's up here in the city, everybody with the city, to the chamber, to the volunteers, and especially to the donors, everybody that makes that thing happen every year, and especially this year regardless of all the BS that's happened circumstantially, thank you. It wasn't ideal, but it still happened, and we still celebrate it, and that's what matters. It didn't make everybody happy, because obviously air quality was an issue, but at the end of the day, you're never going to make anybody happy, so thanks for doing what's best for most. And also, probably would have lost some money had we not had it, we would have paid for at least part of it anyway, so I'm glad we got it in. We appreciate you guys very, very much, and look forward to that every year. As the city's representative to the Kern Economic Development Corporation, I sit on the subset of that, the West Kern Economic, what is it, West Kern Economic Alliance, all these word salads. I got to go visit the wonderful logistics center in, it's technically in Shafter, but it's basically off of Zachary Road and 7th Standard Road. They've built a giant logistics center over there, and I'll get to kind of how that ties into Taft here in just a moment. Do you guys know that there's a whole restaurant in there that's open to the public? If you happen to be driving in that area, they have a very nice restaurant, and it's basically like a Victor's or a Chipotle, very affordable, very delicious, and it's open to the public. Who would have known? I wouldn't have had I not gone there, but it was a really nice experience. Part of the mission of the EDC is to support economic development throughout the county, and as a member, we hope to take advantage of that as much as we can, which is one of the reasons we got the Western Kern Alliance kind of started. But this is the second, third meeting total, the second one I've been able to attend, and one of the things I'm pushing the group to do is to really, instead of getting there and just meeting to meet, saying, "Hey, this is what's happening in our community," is to say, "Okay, great, how can we duplicate that if it makes sense here? How can you fill a gap where we don't have the staff but you might, or the expertise?" And vice versa, we need to be more of a think tank, more of a working group that focuses on, you know, business retention and expansion, those types of things, instead of just getting together to talk. So I'm hoping to see that group morph more so into that than to kind of glad hand. It was nice to have the supervisors there, we had Supervisor Parlier, as well as Supervisor Couch there, because both represent different parts of the county in the western area. They really talked a lot about the approval at the county level of the second supplemental recirculated environmental impact report, SSR EIR. I think everybody was very happy to see that come to fruition, I know I was there, the mayor was there, to see that come to life. Conveniently, right after that, we had a nice little letter come out from the California Energy Commission, and I'm sure the mayor will talk about at some point, that really touted all the benefits that the county touted in the passing of that SSR EIR, and we've been talking about those things for decades. But it was really nice to see that happen, and it actually kind of blew my mind to see a state-level agency in the state of California come out in support of oil and gas production, especially here in the county of Kern. So very much looking forward to that. But my point was, where we were at in Shafter just happens to coincide next to a couple different arterial roadways, one of them being a four-lane highway, Lardell Highway, 7th Standard Road, whichever one you want to call it. It's not far from Highway 99 and/or I-5, and it really got my wheels turning about how much opportunity we could have if we had a similar arterial roadway that was four lanes wide heading west off of I-5 or 99. Maybe it's Highway 119, maybe it's Highway 166, or maybe it's both, with the casino happening as quickly as it is. Speaking of that, December of 2025 is the kickoff date there for Phase 1. It would be wonderful to see those types of roadways expanded, and to see how the land in and around the city of Taft, and especially on the western side of Kern County, could be utilized for warehousing, or any type of industrial application, in addition to seeing the oil and gas industry come back to life under President, not President Bush, I don't know where I came out with that, President Trump, and the Kern administration, as well as all the efforts going on for advocacy through California for Energy and Science, or the rural, what's the name of the group, Mr. Mayor?
America's Rural Energy.
America's Rural Energy Coalition, those types of things are only going to be more and more beneficial, but in times like this where the industry has not been doing well for some time because of artificial pressures at the state level, these are the times when economic development can be really, really helpful to us, and so we need to look, how do we take out the bottom of the valleys while supplementing those peaks? And I look forward to doing that through the EDC. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, sir, that's quite a bit. It's a shame when we have to say goodbye to critical components of our community, because after all, what makes us what we are is the human element. And there were some real characters that have been a part of our colorful past and have set the stage for the future development. So I will miss them, we will all miss them, but they'll never truly be gone from the city of Taft, they'll always be a part of the city of Taft. What Mayor Pro Tem was talking about regarding the letter from California Energy Commission, CEC, was actually precluded by a letter from none other than Governor Gavin Newsom. And what happened was, the governor kept pushing, and pushing, and pushing anti-oil and gas, and this ridiculous concept that refineries were gouging the consumer, and more regulations. Finally, the businesses, the owners of those refineries said, "Look, we've had enough." Basically, it costs twice as much money per gallon to run a refinery in the state of California as any other state in the United States of America. And that is something you just can't get away with, but when you add all those other layers of regulations, regulatory compliance, and it becomes an economic burden, next thing you know, you've got what California is. There was a fire in the Martinez refinery up north, that's about 8.5% of all the oil that we refine. You've got Phillips 66 closing their refinery, they're out of here, that's 9% of the oil we refine. You've got Valero Energy said they're closing their Benicia refinery, that's another 9%. Maybe going to close their Wilmington refinery as well. By the time you get to that point, the state of California will no longer have the capacity to refine, no matter how much oil they import, to refine enough refined products to support the state of California. They just won't, okay? Let alone send any of it to Arizona and Nevada. And the governor has gotten us to this energy disastrous cliff, and we are about ready to fall off the cliff. Just so everybody knows, one more refinery mishap, whether it's a fire, an equipment failure, or slow deliveries, we have about 15 days with a refined product. 15 days. And then we'd be buying it every other day based on the last digit on your license plate. We are that close, people. We are what, 8% right now as far as refined product in storage? We are 8% below the five-year average. We are not in a very strong position. So the governor actually sent a letter, when we finally struck a note with him, he sent a letter to the CEC saying, "Hey, you've got to sit down and make nice with these people, you've got to let them know they can continue to refine, and there's a place for them in California, and California needs fuel going well into the future, and they'll be able to continue to make money and make a profit." And all of this coming from a letter from the governor to the CEC, California Energy Commission, then the California Energy Commission goes out and starts saying, "These are the things we need to do. You need to suspend enforcement of your anti-oil and gas refinery laws, and minimum refined product on hand, and all these other things." So it was really interesting, and it is, because it has not played out. It's still in play. We did, as a county, and the County Board of Supervisors passed the revised recirculated second EIR. That thing just gets getting bigger and bigger, but they did. And I will tell you, having been involved in this for so very long, that the opposition to that was minimal compared to what it had been in the past. I don't think we had six people speak against it compared to all of those that spoke in support of it. Energy insecurity leads to energy poverty. Energy poverty is driving people out of their homes. 36% of Californians hanging on by their fingernails right now, living near or below the poverty level. That is not a golden state. An energy policy that actually supports poverty, an energy policy that leaves 36% of the population behind, 7/8 of the global population, no matter what else it does, is a dismal failure. If you are so inhumane as to be comfortable with leaving 7/8 of the global population behind, there's something really wrong with you. And these are things that we have been talking about and bringing to their attention for a very long time. And lastly, regarding energy, you know, the thing that stands in the way of capital investment when it comes to industry is regulatory uncertainty. You live in an environment where you don't know what the government's going to throw at you tomorrow, you don't know how many additional hurdles they're going to place in front of you. Whether or not investment will have a chance to pay off, you don't make that investment, all right? So the biggest stone wall to capital investment by industry is regulatory uncertainty. Chevron USA has been a part of the state of California since 1879, is when their roots began, 1879. And they, like 352 other business headquarters between 2018 and 2021, are leaving the state of California because of this very issue, regulatory uncertainty. And when you stop and think of where they are going to go, this is the shock part. So Chevron is leaving the state of California, the United States of America, they cannot invest their money knowing they'll be able to create a return because of regulatory uncertainty. But you know where they are going? They're going to go, along with several other big companies, including Exxon, including ENI, including Total, and they're going to invest in Benghazi, Libya. That's right, Libya. So it would appear to the professionals and to, they're just one of some 23 large global companies that are going back into Libya to explore and produce and invest. It is far more, they are far more comfortable with that than they are staying in the state of California. What's that tell you about our policies in the state of California? If that is not just in a nutshell the most pathetic statement of who and where we are, I don't know what is. It's just mind-boggling, but it's a reality. So I just thought everybody ought to know that. All right, that is all I have this evening. Now then, item number six, department reports. Do we have any department reports this evening? Chief, if you would please. Chef McMahon.
Good evening all, Mayor, city staff, city council. This will be the statistics for the month of June from the police department. We had total incidents of 1,020, calls for service of 432, officer-initiated incidents of 488. We did a total officer-written cases of 144. We had misdemeanor and felony arrests of 48, we had misdemeanor arrests at 41, and of course felony arrests at seven. Quite a busy month for things that happened. Kathy, I just wanted to add something to your conversation, that's called controlled chaos in law enforcement. You just adapt and overcome, and it sounds like you did.
All right, thank you very much, sir. As a side note, I just want everybody to know, I don't know if we have discussed this in open session, but the people of the state of California passed Prop 36 because they were sick and tired of becoming victims, and they passed it by over 70% in the state of California. Well, our governor opposed Prop 36 because after all, he wants to just close all prisons and just ignore prison or criminal behavior. But as one of his budget proposals came out, in his first budget proposal, he left out any money for the enforcement of Prop 36. So he opposed it, 70-plus percent of the people of the state of California said, "No, we're sick and tired of being victims, you've got to do something about this, people are dying from fentanyl." But Gavin, being Gavin, thought, "I just don't have any money in the budget to enforce it, and therefore it doesn't mean anything." Well, in the latest budget revision that I did see, I believe there was $101 million of one-time funding for Prop 36. So it is my hope that makes it into the final version of the budget, and it can actually be put to good use to protect the people and do what they voted on. So I hope it gets all the way down to you all to put to use, chief.
I hope so too. I think it's forced his hand with 70% of the populace saying, "This is what we want, we're tired of this." And of course, his, I believe his statement was, "I don't know what state I live in anymore, I don't understand this." He had struggles with this, so it's kind of amazing that he's the governor.
Yeah.
I guess I shouldn't say that, but I will.
Poor.
Also, I just wanted to add the heat that we're dealing with right now. This is normal for Kern County, we all know about it, we've dealt with this for years, but it affects the elderly, it affects the young, and it affects everyone, basically, and your animals. So be cautious about what you're doing with your animals in the cars, leaving them out where there's no water or any access. Make sure you reach out to family members that are elderly, make sure that you have contact with them. It's just, you never know at any time this heat and the degree it is, that it can affect anybody, and especially your loved ones, so reach out, reach out.
Absolutely, and do not leave animals or young people in automobiles. The end of that is catastrophic.
Please.
Whatever you do. Thank you very much, chief, appreciate it, and thank your troops for us as well.
Absolutely.
Item number seven, city manager statements.
Thank you, Mayor, no further statements this evening.
All right. Item number nine, city attorney statements.
No answer.
Okay, you're not wearing that hat tonight, all right. I will tell you, no city attorney statements this evening either. Item number 10, future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen.
None here.
All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Items 11 through 13, all items listed on the consent calendar will be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none, those items are, item number 11, the minutes of the July 1st, 2025 regularly scheduled meeting. Item number 12 is the payment of bills, about $185,000 worth. Item number 13, funding to the Taft Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of January 2025 to March 2025. Recommendation is a motion to approve the 25% allocation of the transient occupancy tax to the Taft Chamber of Commerce for the quarter of January 2025 through March 2025. Is any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
None here.
Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items 11 through 13.
Some second.
I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cryer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
Mayor North?
Yes, and that passes on a 4-0 vote. I am proud to report that this evening, this council will not be going into closed session for pending litigation. So I want to thank you all for being a part of this. Thanks again for all the heroes of Fourth of July dating all the way back to 1776 through 2025. Good evening, everybody, we're adjourned.